This November 7th, 2024 meeting of the Dublin City Council will hereby be called to order. We'll begin with an invocation from our city manager, Josh Powell. Please remain standing after the invocation for the pledge to the flag. Mr. Powell.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the rain we've received in our community. We thank you for this mayor and council and the work that they do for our town. We pray your blessing over them and the decisions they make for our community. And we pray that everything that we do be pleasing to you and for your glory. In this name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Dublin City Council. We're meeting early today. We have a short agenda with just a few items. Before we get into our agenda items, I want to take note of something. Ms. Gynell Ellington passed away recently. And in honor of her service to the city, I issued a commendation from the city of Dublin in honor and appreciation of Gynell Ellington's service to the city of Dublin. I'd like to read that commendation as we begin this meeting. Whereas Ms. Gynell Ellington was an outstanding resident of Dublin, Georgia, a 1969 graduate of O'Conne High School and was honored as Miss O'Conne High School. And whereas after graduation, Ms. Ellington attended and graduated from Tuskegee University in Alabama and then returned to her hometown and served as an instructor both at schools and churches, sharing her knowledge and education. And whereas Ms. Ellington volunteered in numerous local organizations and served her community as a longtime board member of the City of Dublin Board of Zoning Appeals. And whereas in her final years, she offered her wisdom and guidance to the Citizen Advisory Committee for the revitalization of the O'Conne High School gym. Now, therefore, the city of Dublin offers this commendation in honor and appreciation of Ms. Gynell Ellington and call upon the citizens of Dublin to honor and memorialize her lifetime of service to our community. I issued that on November 1st of 2024 and provide it to Ms. Ellington's family so that they would have it during her services. And I just wanted to note that this morning. All right, we will now move into our agenda items. The first item is approval of the called, of the meeting minutes from our called meeting of October 19th and October 25th. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Brown, a second from Councilman Griggs. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes. The minutes are approved. We now will move to item number two, which is approval of bills over $15,000. Mr. Powell.
The council has a copy of all the expenditures of the city in their packet.
Any questions for staff regarding those? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to pay the bill.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs, a second from Councilman Mascara. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. We'll now move to item number three, which is approval of purchases over $15,000. Mr. Powell.
We have one purchase for council's consideration. It's the purchase of a 14-ton gas heat pump from Middle Jordan Mechanical for $33,684. The back unit back here at the back of City Hall that serves the rear of the building went out on us and has to be replaced. This will be paid for out of 18 SPOLOs funds and staff recommends to approve that purchase.
All right, any questions for staff regarding this purchase item? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion for approval from Councilman Griggs, a second from Councilman Colby. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. We'll now move to item number four, which is discussion and action on a resolution to transfer properties to the land bank. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2450, a resolution of the city of Dublin by and through its mayor and council to execute and deliver a quitclaim deed of certain properties to the Dublin Lawrence Land Bank Authority to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. And we had a couple of properties that were deeded to us by virtue of the nuisance action. One was at 205 Sawyer Street and the other was 203 Zenith Street. We intend to get those in the hands of the land bank so that they can work to get those redeveloped or in the hands of private investors. The properties both do have structures on them. The one on Sawyer Street is planned to be demoed and we are evaluating the one on Zenith.
All right, and I know that we have Ms. Sonia Calvin here from the land bank. I believe Mr. Cliff Cruz was here for our pre-council meeting. Do we have any questions for Mr. Powell or for Ms. Calvin at this time? All right, I think that you've had all the information regarding these two properties in your packet. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Jones and a second from Councilman Godfrey. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. If any are opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number five on the agenda. And Ms. Calvin, I know that when the land bank has finished doing what they need to with those properties, I look forward to receiving some information back from the land bank so that the city can see how this has turned out.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you. Item number five on our agenda is discussion and action on a contract amendment with Garbage Construction related to the city hall facade. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2451, a resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia by and through its mayor and council to authorize the city manager to approve a change order to the contract with CE Garbage Construction Company concerning the city hall brick and window improvement project to provide authority for approval of expenditures for the project to authorize the mayor to execute and deliver the same, provide an effective date and for other lawful purposes. The last part of the city hall brick and window project was the front of the building, the front facade. And council had requested earlier this year for us to evaluate some different options with the front of the building. At the end of the day, we have this recommending and asked the council to approve a change order to have the marble that is currently on the front of the building removed and re-secured to the front of the building. If you go up there and stand up and walk up to it, you can kind of see the backing of it is kind of deteriorated over time. And just to make sure all that is intact and well-secured to the building, we need to have that done. We have about $74,000 or just over $74,000 left that was already allocated for this purpose. The cost is estimated to be an additional $58,000 to do this. And so we have 06 SPOLOs funds, which was the funding source for this project overall that are remaining to cover this cost and ask that council approve this resolution.
All right, I know that we looked at the costs of the various other options that range from $290,000, $375,000, $500,000. So by far, this was the most economical option. And I know that the bid amount is, or the amendment amount is more than what we had originally anticipated. But as discussed in pre-council, there are some opportunities to get that number down.
That's right.
So that maybe the general conditions cost won't be as high.
And there's some, there's some condition money in there, some contingency money, I should say, for if any of the marble is damaged that we might not have to utilize at all, so.
Okay. All right, any questions for our staff regarding this? And the funding sources primarily are 2006 SPOLOs funds that we had left over from, I guess that's almost, that's over 15 years ago, right?
Yeah. Well, that we started collecting.
Right, yeah. All right, any, any other questions or comments regarding this? All right, if not, do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Brown, a second from Councilman Smith. Any discussion in the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. We'll look forward to getting that finally repaired and then that will wrap up the exterior renovations to City Hall.
That's right.
And I think it looks great. I think just visually, you know, obviously it's better from a waterproofing and efficiency point of view, having the new windows in and some of the work that was done on the roof and around the exterior of the building. But aesthetically, I think it's a big improvement, looks great.
I'll say to you, if we were going to have to pull additional money for, to do the other options, it would have pulled from money that we were intending to use for the remainder of the renovations inside the building. So I think those are kind of more pressing than changing the front of the building.
Yep, all right. So with that, we'll move on to our last item, which is item number six, the adoption of a language access plan. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2452, a resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia by and through its mayor and council approving a language access plan, or LAP, for limited English proficient persons to comply with certain housing and urban development regulations to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes. We have to have a valid LAP adopted in order to comply with the conditions of the CDBG project. And so this is, this will adopt the LAP for the next five years. We, the last time we adopted this was in 2019.
All right, so my understanding on our discussion is that we've received a CDBG grant of, what, almost a million dollars for the improvements to the West Mary Street area. And we also participate in the CHIP program, which is a housing rehab program where we also receive federal funds and that the federal government requires that we adopt this access plan for those people who have limited English proficiency. And so in order to comply with the federal regulations and be able to get that grant money for the CDBG project and the CHIP projects, we need to adapt, adopt this, this plan. Do we have any questions for staff regarding this? All right, if not, do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Jones, a second from Councilman Mascara. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. All right, so that concludes our regular agenda. It's now time for citizens' comments. Are there any citizens that would like to make a comment this morning? If so, please come forward.
How you doing?
Great.
Counselor, my name is Country Guyton. I live at 102 Child's Court, Dublin, Georgia. We have a flooding problem. Coming off of Carolyn Watson and onto Child's Court. Last night I called the emergency number for the city. They sent out a, I guess the guy that worked for the water department. He said it's not his problem. This is a continual problem. It floods all, the water come all the way up to my door. When the, when the storm came through, water was at my door. You could see the water line on my vehicles. We have no driveways over there. And the curb is six inches. All right, the water come above the curb. I have talked, well, before most of you all got here, city manager Lance Jones, he came out, he sent the city out. The pipe is not clogged up. It's insufficient. The pipe cannot hold that amount of water. I have pictures. I have talked to Mr. Benny about it, Mr. Benny Jones. I don't know who to talk to next. They told me to talk to the engineering department. I said, I'm going to talk to the city manager and the mayor and see what, see can we get this resolved? Because I've been over there 20 years. I pay property taxes just like everybody else. All right? So if we can, see can we get this issue straightened out, that'd be great.
All right, thank you for those comments and our city.
Stay after and talk to them.
Yeah, if you can stay after the meeting, our city engineer is here, Mr. Bradshaw. He has maps of our stormwater drainage system and we can, I mean, I understand, you know, one of the issues that we've got with the city is that we have insufficient stormwater drainage in many, many parts of town. And it's unbelievable how expensive it is, you know, to, to correct that from street to street. But we need to make sure that your issue is known and documented with our engineering department so we can at least, you know, know what the scope of the problem is over there. So if you wouldn't mind staying after the meeting and meeting with Mr. Bradshaw, we'll see what we can do to help.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, any other comments this evening? Sorry, this morning? All right, come on forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Jacqueline Denise Jaden White. I live at 603 Hudson Drive, Dublin, Georgia. I will try to be brief. Number one, Madison Street. This is a question. Is this work going to be completed in time for the Martin Luther King and St. Patrick's Day parade? That's my first question, which you can't answer. Number two, based on the storm, Highland Avenue and the block before you get to the library, heading in the direction of Oak Street is beginning to be impassable. I was told that the Army Corps of Engineers is working with the city. But if you come, I travel Highland Avenue from Home Depot and go to the library a lot. And there's a block, I don't have the street name, but that block just before you get to the library on the right, there are several oak trees on each side. And now they are starting to move further out into the street. And with me having bad eyes, I'm afraid that I'm going to hit it. And I've already been ashamed by the shop due to me trying to get around the curb at the federal building. That just cost me $1,000 last month. And the third thing, unfortunately, because of the hurricane, as I am a tenant of 603 Hudson Drive, I would like to know why the city inspector's office has not returned my call on a vagrancy condition separated by a pecan tree in my backyard, which is causing health concerns on my side of the tree. I have talked to Mr. Jones, Councilman Godfrey and Councilman Smith, and they suggested that. And I tried to reach out to the city manager. It is not a city problem and it's not really my problem as I don't own the property, but I rent. And because of this storm, now all of us in the city are having problems with having things, trees removed from backyards due to the price gouging. And I am a senior citizen, age 66, fixed income from the Department of Veteran Affairs, and I cannot afford from one quote, $2,000 to $8,000 for me. I have applied with FEMA and did receive the $750 and the $300, which told me this would only be just a little bit to help me. I have gotten, okay. The last but not least, it is a health concern. It's a eyesore, flies, mosquitoes, dogs, cats and smell of urine comes in my window on a good day. We have mosquito trucks in the city. There's a price of this tree removal.
All right, thank you for those comments. And do we have any other citizens' comments? And I will address, let me actually address the Madison Street question and then we'll have the, have Mr. Hall. My understanding is that Madison Street will still be closed by the time the MLK and St. Patrick's parades come, come through. We got a delay because of the hurricane. Georgia Power was not able to get out on the schedule that we expected to get those power lines removed. The power lines are actually underground, but the ones that are above ground have not yet been removed because Georgia Power is doing other things right now. Mr. Bradshaw, do you know when Georgia Power is supposed to, to get to that section of the work?
They, they haven't told me a specific date. I did see ANSCO, which is the contractor for AT&amp;T, on the road yesterday. I know they're probably not there today with the rain. The city's been working on fiber relocation of those. And the other one, we'll be waiting on this charter communications.
Okay, so my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that before the work on the actual street and then sidewalks can begin, we got to get those power lines out of there. We can't get those poles out of there until we've got AT&amp;T, Charter and Georgia Power with all their lines off of them. And so right now, all those others have been scheduled, but Georgia Power is still unknown because of the backlog and the hurricane. That project was supposed to be a nine-month project, I believe. And, you know, hopefully we can get ahead, get back on schedule once those poles are removed and Georgia Power gets out there. But it's going to be pushing it. So we're not sure exactly what the completion date's going to be and we won't be able to tell the completion date until we get that information, that scheduling information from Georgia Power. Also, you know, there is this issue, and I'm sure many people in the public are interested in the debris pickup. And I know you mentioned the debris pickup on Highland and Elm Street. Mr. Powell, do you mind giving an update on the Army Corps of Engineers? Do you want to do that now and then we'll get our final comment?
Sure, we, well, the city has not stopped picking up debris. It continued in that effort and we are probably at 25% through the city. We have waited and not engaged any independent contractors to help with that because the state had indicated that they were working out an agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers to have contractors come and assist with the debris pickup and they would take over that process once they got here. They have, they have forces that have arrived in Lawrence County this week. They were supposed to start today in the city of Dublin collecting, but as I understand, they're waiting due to our rain issue. But once they, once we see that they are actively going down every street to pick up debris, and I want to be clear too, Georgia Department of Transportation right of ways, which is going to be Highway 441, Highway 257, Veterans Boulevard, Highway 80 through town, those will be collected by Georgia Department of Transportation workers, not Army Corps or the city of Dublin. But city streets and county roads, the Army Corps of Engineer will begin picking up. They should be working, hopefully if the rain allows this week. And they will, their indication to us so far is that they will make two passes on every road to, to get all the debris collected. So that's, that's the most I know right now. I can't, we have given them our priorities of areas where, that were hit, that have more debris up by the road than others. And so whether they're taking that into account, we don't know at this point.
And are they allowed to go on private properties?
They're not, no, they're only taken from the right of way. So if you've got, if you still have debris in your yard or something that you've not gotten to the road at this point, I would encourage you to get it there. They will not be going on the private property to collect any debris.
All right, so for citizens who have debris in their yards now is definitely the time to get it to the side of the road so that the Army Corps can get it picked up.
Also, Mrs. Bradshaw, could you please explain why we do not have mosquito spraying trucks anymore allowed in the city anymore?
Yeah, do you want to, are you able to address that? Or do you want Mr. Powell to address it?
I can talk a little bit about the dangers of it. If you want to talk about the history of why we don't.
She shared it with us at our house because it came up that day you were over there.
All right, if you'd like to talk with Ms. Wright directly about it after the meeting, would that be helpful?
That'd probably be best.
Okay, all right, great.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Wright, if you'll stay and talk with Ms. Bradshaw, she'll, yeah, she'll explain the, the mosquito issue that we've got. All right, Mr. Hall.
My name is John Hall. I live at 307 West Gaines Street. Right across the street, I can see City Hall. First thing is I want to thank the city for fixing the sewer issue. We just had a lot of rain and guess what? No sewage. So, thank you. The next thing, you've already, you just hit what I was going to come up here and talk about. There was a press release on October 10th about debris collection and removal. And you've kind of already said what I was hoping I'd, I'd hear, but I'll tell you, everybody I talked to has no idea what's going to be happening. If you look at my, the front of my drive, I've got seven-foot tall stack of limbs and everything. And going out in the street, we have to be very careful. The whole front yard is lined with stuff. So when I saw this press release, it said, "We anticipate this collection process will take months to complete." My question was, why? And my first question was, is it a manpower issue? Is it a money problem? Or is it space to dump? It sounds like y'all have a plan. So I think the public would like to know what that plan is. I mean, we're here, but everybody else is working and all that. And people keep asking me or I talk to them, I don't know what's going on. Stubbs Park, I walk my dog there every day. I'm having to walk in the street and it's pretty dangerous. It's like a bomb went off over there. So I'd like to know what, what's the plan, what areas and when? And the last thing is, the clock downtown has not been fixed yet. Y'all could fix that clock, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, okay, so I, I know there are a lot of people in the public who want to understand the debris pickup issue. And I'll just say this, that we are trying to, to do it as quickly as possible while not being foolish about spending money with third-party contractors if the state will come in and do a part of it for us. That's just being, I think, using our funds wisely. So we were told pretty early on that the Army Corps of Engineers would come in and bring in larger trucks than what the city has to pick up some of the bigger debris and would do a couple of passes through town. We just weren't given a timeline of when that would happen. And we didn't actually know that, when they were going to be here until they got here, I think. And so they just got here this week. So now we kind of have an idea that they're going to, they're going to be here. They're going to do two passes. They're going to have very large trucks so that they can pick up some of the heavier stuff. Now, the city has been doing its regular pickups this entire time. But, you know, we only have so many trucks and of a certain size. So it's going to, we're going to let the, the Army Corps of Engineers do their work. They'll do their two passes and then we'll go back to our regular pickup. Now, you asked a question about parks and that also includes cemeteries.
Okay, so the, the priority is to get everything off the right of way first. And we have talked with the Army Corps about whether or not they will assist with getting the trees up, both at Stubbs and Mayor's Park as well as Riverview because there's several, several trees down at Riverview Golf Course. And that's something we're still working on. If they're not able to do that or will not do that as a part of their contract with the state, then we will seek out additional help to get that done. I'd like, the, a couple of things I want to address is, one is, you'll remember that right after the hurricane hit us, there was another hurricane that came. And so all the contractors that were, that hit Florida, all the contractors that were here, you know, ready and willing to work here to keep them here, their prices went sky high. I think the county was, Brian Rogers told me they were quoted some awful figure, eight to 10 million dollars to do the county. So that we, you know, have begged off of that. And so we were waiting on, like the mayor said, the Army Corps to get here. We did, they had to go in and do assessments of all the state, the areas that were impacted, before they would decide where they were going to go. And they were not communicating this with us very well. And so, and I've not wanted to put out any information to the public on their collection efforts until I actually know they're here and actually collecting. So I'm giving the public accurate information. And so now that they're here and once we're able to get, you know, good information about where they're going first, because they're not even telling us that, then I'll be able to get that information out to the public on social media and through press releases. But again, the priority is to get everything off the right of way first to make it safe for everybody to travel. The situation you described is like that in several places in town. And it's unfortunate, but that's just the byproduct of a hurricane coming through town. So we're dealing with it, we are actively working on it. I don't want to give out information that's in the works until I know for sure what's actually going to happen. So that's the reason why there's kind of not been any information on that.
All right, any, I know we're going to have council comments in a minute. Are there any other citizen comments? All right, if there are no other citizens' comments, we'll move to council comments. Ms. Brown, do you have any comments this morning? Okay, great. Mr. Brown?
No comments today.
Mr. Jones?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this morning and taking time out of your schedule to come here. And thank you for the citizen comments, the concerns. We've been getting questioned about that also. I've been getting questioned about that and we just, just tell them to be patient because it's coming. So we just thank, we got an update, we give out, give that out to the citizens. And, but I also want to say, we won't be here, but Happy Veterans Day to all my fellow veterans, Monday. The life, the feeling that we enjoy, the rights and privileges that we enjoy, you could thank a veteran for that. So see a veteran, wish them Happy Veterans Day to all my veterans. Thank you for your service. Thank you for all that you've done for this country and all that you continue to do. Because as they say, you know, you wrote a check to the military, to the country, to the government, and it's, don't have an expiration date on it. So we just thank you for all that you continue to do. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman?
I'd like to say thank you to all our employees that's been working very hard with the cleanup and all they continue to do that's been out there. I know they got problems, situation at their house. They've been diligently working to keep the streets as clean as they can do and do as hard, much work as they can do. So I thank you all for all that y'all continue to do.
All right, thank you for those comments. Councilman Godfrey, any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say thank you all for coming.
I'd just like to say thank you all for coming out today. I know it's early, but I appreciate seeing your faces. Also, I would like to thank you, Mayor, for the accommodation that you did for my cousin, Ms. Godneell Ellington. The family appreciates it. We also appreciate Mrs. Tara Bradshaw for coming to visit with us during that time of bereavement, and also for the city taking the time to clean up Rutland Drive because we had a lot of out-of-state family come down and that street had a lot of debris in the road, and the city made an exception. And I appreciate you, Josh, for making sure that got done because it was a lot and they made an exception for the funeral and the family members, so thank you. And also, I apologize to my council members for not being here for the special call meeting. However, I had an appointment that I had to go out of town, take care of, but I stand with my mayor and my council members regarding the Dublin City School tax situation. So thank you all for that.
All right, thank you, Councilman Godfrey. Councilman Colby.
I just want to say thank you for coming this morning, and I want to echo what Benny said about our employees. I think we have seen over the last couple of months how dedicated and hardworking they are, and I just want to express my sincere appreciation and thanks to each of them that work tirelessly, day after day, to make sure the city's running. We have added so many projects to their plate and so many additional things that we want, you know, questions, we have questions unending, and they have always been so patient with us to get those answers to us and so that we are able to make wise decisions. So I just want to express my thanks to our employees.
I just also want to acknowledge my cousin, Tim Ellington. Even though you're grieving, you still came to Dublin and you're working on Unity Point, adding to that, and also the triangle by the fire station. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Mascara.
What's been said. I appreciate y'all coming out. Thank you for what you do. Always remember, we work for you, and that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Councilman Smith.
Just to reiterate, everybody, thank you for coming. Thank you for expressing your concerns. Hopefully, our city, we can get it taken care of. And on behalf of the Telfair Committee, I just want to thank the city for the outstanding job it did in preparing the park for the event. Everyone loved it, it was nice, all the kids out and they came out and enjoyed itself, so they really appreciate it and thank you.
Yeah, I think those playgrounds have been.
Yeah, those playgrounds, they are phenomenal.
At Hillburn and at Pritchett Street.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and I, I'll just, I know I'm kind of out of turn, if you don't mind, Paul, but I'll just echo that. I know that, Josh, you and Tara and others with the city kind of went out of the way to make sure that Pritchett Street Park was ready for the Telfair reunion, so appreciate you going the extra mile for that. I think it, I saw the pictures from it and it looked like, I love seeing all the kids all over the playground equipment, that was great. Councilman Griggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo what everybody else has said, and no further comments.
All right, thank you. Mr. Powell.
I'll just say, the street department folks and sanitation workers have been really busting it, and they're the ones to give credit for, for Pritchett Street. I just ask them to do things and they do it, so it's not, not me. But so Robbie Petrie and Nicole Simmons and that group, and Chad Berch in particular, and also our contractor, Dixie Landscaping, went out and made special efforts to make sure the park was ready for the Pritchett Street, so, yeah, thank you all.
All right, yeah, it's, we've got a great team here, and whenever there's some event or some special need, everybody steps up, so I'm very, very proud of the city staff. And with no other comments, we will be adjourned. Thank you for coming.